Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Trustees, meeting to order on Tuesday, March 17th at approximately 6:15 PM, although the clock says 5:15 PM. That administrator we have didn't take care of that since yesterday, but that's okay.
I can't hear you.
In order for everyone to hear, please turn off any noise makers. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Lino?
Here.
Duffy?
Here.
Sorry. I'm in the wrong thing here. Okay, Baker?
Here.
Bell?
Here.
Sashki?
Here.
And Kadankle and Berdor are excused.
Okay. Approval of the agenda?
So moved.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the minutes as published?
So moved.
Second.
Any changes, additions, deletions, comments, grammatic remarks, other errors, or information? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Comments and correspondence. Under comments, I want to make a comment. Here we are 24 hours later in the same position, but think of everything that's changed in the last 24 hours. And it's going to keep on changing. I mean, it's amazing what's just happened in the last 24 hours. The other thing that I was surprised at, because I keep getting all these things from the county, is the cases in Wisconsin just about doubled overnight.
They did double. Fifty-six percent.
Yeah.
Fifty-six percent.
Right.
It was up 27 percent, 33 percent, 37 percent, and 56.
Yeah.
It was Dade and Milwaukee County.
Right. And now Sheboygan, Fond du Lac doubled. Fond du Lac went from six to 12.
Yeah.
Right. So, I keep watching Fond du Lac, because that's hitting the Fox Valley.
Right. But they could be coming from, we got a lot of cancellations today. Open Hearth had 22 cancellations today for this weekend and next weekend. So, there's so much chatter on social media. There's something happening nationally. The Ashpads stay home nationally.
Yep.
And there are people that are in the streets now, like, go home. We're not, the Outer Banks, now you have to have an ID to get onto the Outer Banks, that you live there or you own property there.
Right. So we can-
And they have no cases just like us.
So we can lift two out of the three bridges, have the one bridge there with the Sheriff's Department.
They have to get out, then we have to, I mean, the emergency has to get out anyway. Yeah.
But, and, you know, just things have really changed in 24 hours, and the same thing tomorrow.
Yeah.
Correspondents?
There were two letters included in the meeting packets. One of them is from Door Landscape and Nursery, and it concerns services they'll provide for people that have the Emerald Ashbore. There was also a thank you letter from the Sister Bay Historical Society.
Does anybody in the audience want to care to make a comment? Item number one. Discussion regarding the possibility of the village being formally designated as a Green Tier Legacy Community and review of resolution 421-031-72020, which approves the participation in that program. Consider a motion for action if appropriate.
So just to give you an update as to what's going on with the Green Tier, from a staff perspective, we talked to their representative and just inquired about the Village of Sister Bay joining the Green Tier Legacy Community, and they were welcoming us with open arms. She sent us all the packet information of things that we need to do, that checklist that we talked about, joining the conversations, but the first thing we need to do is pass the resolution, adopt the ordinance. So once we do that, then staff will start doing and completing the checklist and getting involved as we can.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve resolution 421-0317-2020, to participate in the Green Tier program.
Second.
Discussion?
You're right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry. Item number two. Discussion regarding the recommendation from the Plan Commission that the Village Board pass and adopt resolution, I'm just going to start with 419, with 419, which approves CSM submitted by Representatives Harbor Development, SB LLC, and Gary Wessa to authorize the creation of a CSM for parcel number 181-423001A, 181-423001B, 181-423001C, 181-423001D, 181-423001E, and 181-423001F, which property is commonly referred to as the old school property. Consider motion for action if appropriate.
So it's pretty straightforward. This is for the condos in the duplex that's going to be going up by both Goki Schmelz and Gary Wissa. They've been working, I don't know if you see the crews out there, they've been working on trying to get the water lines, everything switched out to meet the needs now, as they were supposed to be doing single family, and now they're doing multifamily. So there's some changes there. The CSMs are all good to go as far as what's on the papers there. They've been reviewed by engineers and everything looks good on that point.
Questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the recommendation.
Second.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry. Discussion regarding the recommendation from the Plan Commission that the Village Board pass and adopt resolution 420, which approves, 420 again, approves the CSM submitted by Representatives of Door Holdings, Door Hotel Holdings LLC, and authorize creation of CSM for parcel numbers ending in 181-001, 181-002, 181-009, 181-0012, 181-0013, 181-0014, which property has been assigned the address of 10654 North Bayshore Drive, 2335 Mill Road, and 2329 Mill Road. Consider motion for action if appropriate.
Once again, this is just a CSM cleanup for the maps, for surveys. It's been reviewed. There was a change made before the Plan Commission, before Plan Commission approved it, and it was just widening the easement for sewer lines that's been brought to our engineers. It has all been approved. What you're seeing on that map is the updated change with that easement. It's connecting from Bayshore Drive, but everything there is good to go from their end.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item number four. Discussion regarding the recommendation from Wastewater Sewer Committee that a retired swamp pump be sold. Consider a motion for action if appropriate.
If you can see on the background there, it's pretty simple. We have an old swamp pump that we just can't realize. It's sitting there.
Somebody wants to buy that?
We're going to find out.
We're going to find out. It's that or scrap.
It's that or scrap.
We're going to try.
Okay. Might as well try.
I was hoping, I was hoping you had an offer, and we were going to say, yeah, go ahead.
No, yeah, we've been pretty lucky on selling some municipal stuff lately, though, so.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item number five. Discussion regarding a recommendation of the Utilities Committee to accept the bid on a wastewater treatment plant upgrade project. Consider motion for action.
Okay, so it's the recommendation of the Village Board to approve the bid from SiZi Construction for work on the wastewater treatment plant and lift stations. This will include alternate bid items 30 and 33 contingent upon funding being secured from the USDA or from utility replacement funds to cover the cost of bid item 33. We opened bids on March 5th, 2020, for the USDA modifications of the Sister Bay Wastewater Treatment Plant. Bids were received from three responsible contractors. I could turn this over to Josh at any time, I guess, but (laugh) we received bids from Howard Immil, Stop Construction, and SiZi. The bids were pretty tight, ranged from 4.49 million to 4.68 million dollars. Low bid was submitted by SiZi Construction out of Green Bay. Alternate bid items were reviewed. Josh Steffek from Robert E. Lee, sitting behind me, recommends that selecting alternate bid items 30 and 33. Alternate bid item 30 is in lieu of bid item 25, and is for SCADA system integration and commissioning of MCCS by Integrated Process Solutions. Josh can tell you more about that. Alternate bid item number 33 is an added cost to the project, and is for six new remote site control panels by Integrated Process Solutions. Based on the alternate bid items, SiZi Construction remains the low bid with a price of $4,559,576. We reviewed all these bids and reviewed this at the Utilities Committee meeting. After reviewing everything, we did learn that we were a little bit over our contingency and what the USDA was comfortable with. So the USDA requires that we maintain a 5% contingency above the contractor's bid price, and we did not meet that. So we needed to look to the USDA for an additional $300,000 in funding. We were hopeful that we could get some grant funds out of this. It's unlikely that we will see any grant money. We will probably get additional loan funds. The additional loan funds right now are at a rate of 1.875 percent, so, super low rate. So that's good. So anyway, we are looking to, I guess, approve the bid price of 4.559576 million dollars.
What if we don't get the additional 300,000 from the USDA?
We could use our replacement funds to cover the cost. It would just deplete our replacement funds, which were a little bit depleted after the main lift station project, but we could make it work.
Okay.
And we are working on additional value engineering items that may reduce that amount some more.
Okay. Any questions for Josh, or Tasha, or? All right, we need a motion.
I will make the motion.
You're spending a lot of money tonight, Scott.
I'm in the mood. You need this done, Dave, you know that.
Okay, so what is the dollar amount that's approved?
Okay, thank you.
Motion and second. Any other questions or discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks for everybody's hard work on this one, huh?
Yes.
It's been a long time coming.
Yes, it's been a long time coming.
We were excited for that bid process to come in. That was fantastic.
Yeah. I'm just happy to have multiple bids.
Yeah.
Yes.
All those bids came in in the last three minutes.
How they do it.
Discussion regarding potential issues which could arise in the village with respect to coronavirus and how those issues would be handled by village officials. We put this on there initially before we had the declaration and before we had the meeting last night. I was still out in Colorado, and I asked Janelle to put this on, thinking that we're going to have to do something when we got back. So I don't think we need any further discussion of this, only want to ask questions about what's happened in the last 24 hours, or what else we're doing. I can add a couple of details of some things that are going on. You know, we talked last night about the Door County community stepping forward and stepping up. The childcare centers, I'm sorry, the YMCA Childcare Center was going to close. What they've decided to do is they're going to remain open and provide childcare to law enforcement and EMS personnel, so that they don't have to miss their shifts or miss their jobs. And they will limit it to that unless they find that they have room or capacity for, you know, more, but in accordance with, you know, the state mandate. I thought that was pretty good, because that takes care of our law enforcement and EMS personnel. Takes a big burden off them, so that was a great thing. And I don't know if you saw it yet, you were looking at it, Chris Hef came in, the fire chiefs met today, they have two press releases going out. They were able to pull together in cooperation with Public Health Department and Dan Kane from Emergency Management, pulled together a pretty comprehensive support little network, and that's going to be going out, I think he said today, or tomorrow?
Uh, yeah, they have another meeting tonight at 6:30.
Another meeting tonight. Right, and then it'll go out tomorrow. So all of our Door County residents and Northern Door residents will have a resource that they can tap into, whether that means they're elderly and they can't get out and they have to get groceries, or need doctor's appointment, or they need transportation, they need help around the house because of what's going on, or quarantine or isolation requirement. And they did a nice job putting it together, and that will be coming out soon.
And it's a solidified message. It's good for everyone to see one group doing the messaging.
So unless there's some other issue about coronavirus?
Do we have any testing kits in Northern Door?
There are kits at Public Health, correct.
Okay, you know, we had-
Right, right now, as I understand it, the requirement is you have to have a reason. Either you have to go through a doctor, and the doctor has to concur. I know they keep anticipating there to be more and more tests available, but at the moment, like we talked about yesterday, 98% of all tests come back negative. So 100 people think they have a problem, okay, only two end up being, and you wasted 98 kits.
Yeah, sure, yeah. Understand, I was just inquiring about the ability.
So everybody's hoping that, you know, loosens up soon, because obviously you can't really tell the depth of your problem if you're not able to do some community testing to see what's really out there.
Sure. Thank you.
Discussion regarding emergency village meetings authorization. Consider motion for action if appropriate. I think we've probably covered that last night, too.
Yeah, that one was covered last night.
Discussion regarding confirmation of President Lino's appointments. There will be none this month. Reporting county activities from the county supervisor, Dave Lino. Today, the county board held an emergency meeting to ratify the emergency declaration that Ken Popick and I issued yesterday, and so we went through that and worked that out. Same thing, on our small scale, they're operating on, what do we do with committee meetings? What do we do with virtual meetings, et cetera? And you might want to talk to Jason, or you want to talk to Jason at the county. They have figured out a way, pretty much, to be able to do virtual meetings, so next week, the 31st, which is our next board meeting, we're going to do virtual meetings. And in the case of the county, there's a number of people that do not have high-speed broadband internet connections, so we're going to close down multiple conference rooms, since no other meetings are taking place. And maybe in a small conference room, you might have one or two people in there that'll have broadband connections, and there may be four or five people in the actual boardroom, but you'll have people scattered around that'll have the high-speed broadband connections to be able to do the virtual meetings. Be a little bit more difficult up here, unless the people don't have broadband and they need to come into someplace like here, or someplace else that has it, and that's how the meetings could be held. So, we'll still be investigating here, you can-
Yep, we're working on it. We have a pretty good system right now in place. Tasha put together something on our tablets, it's working pretty well, we've been testing it. So hopefully, you know, by the end of the month, we can be working on getting all of our, you know, future meetings done virtually.
Okay. The other thing to mention was the election. Last night, there were some questions what was going on with the election. The state has decided there's no changes to the election. It will proceed as it is. They haven't put any other mandates out, except they were definitely encouraging people to go absentee ballot if they could. And my understanding was, in my brief conversation with Heidi today, that here at the fire station, there's going to be a drive-through voting put up, where you go through the back, drive through the engine bay, stop there, stay in your car, do the vote, and out you go. She also told me that there was over 100 or 150 absentee ballots requested so far. So given the amount of people that normally vote in the April election, wouldn't be surprised if there's going to be that, not very many people doing the drive-through, because most of them would come back on absentee ballot. That being said, when ballots are mailed, they don't always get counted on election night. So as a result of that, they're expecting that maybe in the election night, not all the results will be known, whether that's here or statewide. It may take a day or two to get all that counted before they actually come up with results, so, I know that. Let's see what else.
Did the county close the library, do you know?
Oh, good question.
Citizen ask about the library.
Yes, yes, good point. I've dealt with the library all day. So last night, we agreed to do that, and it's not as simple as just saying, yeah, we're going to do it, because what I said last night was, I'll talk to Ken this morning to see what we could do, because the employees are county employees. So we may quote, say we're going to close it, but you also have to take into account the employees. So we, I went down and met early, so by nine o'clock this morning, we agreed we were going to close all of the branches in Door County, except for the main branch in Sturgeon Bay. Explain how that's going to do. So, as of, I mean, it's closed after five o'clock today, when they close, it's done. So they are closed, it will not be open tomorrow. We're going to maintain Wi-Fi, and if there's some way to increase the signal strength or whatever, maintain a Wi-Fi, because a lot of people pull up outside or sit in their car and use the Wi-Fi, that will be maintained during the course of this, so people don't lose that access. As far as the main library in Sturgeon Bay, it will remain open, but on a very limited basis. No more than 10 people will be let in at a time. No minors will be let in unaccompanied. And the idea is they could go in, and they could walk in, pick up what they wanted to do, and leave. There will be no sit-down. You can't sit down and read a book, or work on something, you have to come and get the materials that you would like, and then you'd be required to leave, and then they will let somebody else in. The feeling was, especially in Sturgeon Bay with the volume of people there, if everything else is shut down, at least give them access to library materials. So that's what's going to happen tomorrow.
Okay.
Everything's subject to change, but at the moment, that's going to happen tomorrow. As far as the employees, what they'll probably do is rotate the employees. So for instance, the Northern Door employees may be asked to work two days a week in Sturgeon Bay, or maybe this week they'll work there, and then they're not working for a week. So they'll try and rotate all the employees throughout the branches, so they're still doing some work. My understanding was, a lot of the employees in Sturgeon Bay were getting pretty loaded up on, with people trying to do things at the library because of what was going on. So they're pretty tired. So they're trying to figure, you know, everybody's trying to figure out a way to keep things moving in some way, shape, or form, so.
Question for you, Dave, on that, and that with the handling you just explained, which I'm not raising an issue with. I just want to make sure I understand what we did last night with the declaration. If, am I understanding what we did last night correctly by saying, were you to have chosen with the power we gave you last night to say, county, no matter what you're doing, we're effective immediately closing the Sister Bay Library, you would have had the power to do that?
Yes, we could have done that. All right, that's all I was trying to clarify. What we did last night, in my mind, was we agreed that we would get the library closed, but knowing that the employees were county employees, I knew we needed to talk to the county, and I knew that the library was an ongoing issue at the county, because the number of people that worked at the library wanted it closed. One of their branches closed, too.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not having any qualm with that. I just want to make sure we're not dealing with something where somebody at the county side said, you don't have the power you think you did from what you declared last night.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on?
Dave, I just wanted, just an update with people. We monitor our county vacationers a lot.
Yeah.
And it's gone from, you know, vacationers asking a lot of questions to a lot of, don't come up here, there's a lot of shaming, you know how that goes on, like with people that are asking questions about maybe coming up, and it's gone from some virtually almost no questions about coming up. 12 hours ago, somebody posted a photograph of Sister Bay, I mean, virtually empty, so I mean, there's a lot of locals that are saying, this is enough and that, it's a no, please don't come up, you know, that sort, and it's a well-read and well-visited site. And then all of our local businesses are also posting their, what their new venue's like, and that they're driving up if they feel like they need you, and also posting closures. It's something that we, that we'll continue to monitor, but I think the conversation has shifted a lot in that direction.
And part of what Chris is going to put out tomorrow after the meeting tonight-
Yeah.
-is there is a press release in there from Jeff Money Penny's group-
Good.
-that they are asking hotels to not accept any further reservations-
Good.
...and to cancel any existing ones that they feel they can't.
Good.
So-
Okay, good.
Don't really want to say much about it till after the meeting tonight-
Sure, sure.
-because that may alter a little bit.
Okay.
But that was the general text of what he was just showing us before.
Well, that's bold for them.
Yes.
Wow. That's very bold for them. We talked to all of our lodging members and informed them about Birchwood, and also actually about Waterbury and so forth, and they were, they were very cooperative, and they had some questions about whether the village could, you know, enact something that would make them, and I said, yeah. I said, are they going to do it at this moment? No, they couldn't. It's something you need to weigh. I said, but, you know, have a forbid to a visitor, and then you don't want to be the guy that had the visitor that, you know, so forth. So it's from a business perspective, how much of a risk do you want to take? So, so they'll, you know, maybe it'll change, but if they do that, maybe tomorrow, that would be, that would be great.
So it looked to me like the press release is pretty well polished and ready to go.
Right.
And I think they're just waiting to get sign-off from the other group tonight, but, yeah. I mean, you know, it's tough, the business community is obviously being hurt, but they're also stepping up. I mean, everybody's stepping up.
Oh, yeah. Everybody's in the same boat.
Right.
We had business, they laid, they laid off 40 people.
Yeah.
A lot of people.
Yeah.
So.
And unfortunately, it's going to get worse before it gets better.
Mm-hmm. It's a pretty big employer, but still, I mean.
Review of financial statements, consideration of a motion to approve the monthly bills. I'll make a motion, we approve the monthly bills in the amount of $330,116.16.
A second.
I didn't let Scott do this, because it wasn't a big enough number for him to-
I'm just keeping my mouth shut.
Right.
Financially.
Any questions on any of the backup-
It's either that or shoot for the moon.
Or the material.
I have nothing to question.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item 11, report by village administrator on village activities and projects.
Okay, so the first thing to note, the Pebble Beach grant update, I know that at the last meeting, we were all inquiring about what's going on with that. The Land Trust and I have been working with the DNR as far as getting our questions answered and things that we need to know about this cycle. It's going to be a competitive cycle, but I think we have a leg up with going for the federal grant and getting a lot of the information already down on paper, a lot of it can translate over. Since then, the Land Trust and myself have kind of divided tasks on what needs to get done. They're cooperating really well. I mean, the Land Trust is working really well with us as far as getting all the information out there. Now that staff will have some time to work on this, we're going to jump on this right away and make this number one priority, because we do need to be going for as much money as we can on this. So Terry's kind of taken leave on the Land Trust side, and we've been working together. I will start to divide the tasks amongst staff to try and get this organized and taken care of, but I don't see any issues with this process.
And what is the timing of this cycle?
I believe its submission is May 1st, so it's coming up, but we don't have too much to worry about as far as getting the materials put together and in.
Okay, so we submit it by May 1st. What is the timing as to awarding?
About a year.
About a year.
Yep, it's just about a year. It depends on how competitive the cycle is, in which this one is somewhat competitive. So my guess would be, we'll know, we'll have a better idea sometime around June or July, and then by next May, they'll have made their decision.
Are we able to go in on multiple cycles?
That I can't answer off the top of my head, but I don't believe so. To my knowledge, no, and I don't think we would really need to. And I don't think we would really need to. I think we're, we've got a pretty good fighting chance on this one with our project. I really do.
As I just seem to recall, it might not have been the Knowles Nelson, but there were some other grants that we did when we were doing the downtown project that we were able to go back a second time. We didn't get everything we wanted the first time, and a year later, we were able to go back and get an additional amount.
Yeah, no, not on this one. I don't believe that's the case. I could be wrong, so I will double-check. But I do know that we are looking at other subsections or some categories to pull some of the money from, whether that's nonprofit by using the land trust side of things or by using the urban grant. She said we do have a fighting chance to getting some of the money from the urban grant side of that. So we, we, you know, we have some other options to pull some money from there, so that's, that's exciting. And the DNR was really hopeful to get our submission in because they really like what Pebble Beach is, and they really want to get us some money.
All right, good. What else?
Okay. So Janelle and I did attend the WCMA conference. For those of you that aren't familiar, that's for the Wisconsin City County Management Association. That was at El Cart Lake, the Ostoff. It's pretty quiet there this time of year, but an excellent conference nonetheless. We did a lot of discussions regarding HR, which was pretty beneficial to us. One of the big topics and takeaways was questions that you can and can't ask in an interview in 2020 and beyond. It's pretty interesting to see that. There were some other discussions too about consolidation of resources with municipalities. I found that to be rather interesting, especially because now I'm in a new, smaller community. It's always important to look at what you can do with your neighbors to get things moving forward. Janelle was also in attendance there, and I think that was a good opportunity for her to not only network with other, you know, administrators and assistant administrators out there, but to attend some of the events that I couldn't because we have two going in tangent. And then the last thing I want to talk about is the capital improvement planning that we've been doing. Since our last meeting, staff has met with Baird and has done one-on-one tours of each site. And Baird has been given some more information on what kind of capital we're, we're going to be outlaying, and it got staff the opportunity to ask questions. Specifically, the most interesting one was Marina and how we kind of categorize, you know, the peers and the finger peers and that, and how we organize that. You know, Dan's in attendance. I think Dan really got to see what, how much we have in capital over at the Parks Department and where it's all scattered and how we're going to have to look to replace it in the future. So a really good start on that, and we're hoping that before, well, I guess, before busy season, that we can get this done and in the books so that it's rolling for next year. Does anyone have any other questions? Well, a lot's changed since I've written this, so.
Okay, great, thank you. We will skip down and do the committee reports before we go into closed session.
Dave, could I just go back just for one second? Not knowing how the whole Corona thing may progress and how it may relate to food, cleanup, things left behind, that type of thing. I'm wondering if we need to move forward somehow with a position and an action plan for how we're going to handle garbage service and owner responsibility of VRBO rentals for having a caretaker monitor that or whatever. You know, we've currently, in talking to Denise offline, she said it's been kind of an open issue that there's never really been a solution for. I've got an example on Birchwood where there's a home there that Bo knows about because I've involved him a little bit. They had somebody come up and rent in, in February for the weekend, and then the garbage cans were left way at the back of the driveway, all the tops open, everything piled in, animals coming chewing through some of the bags, et cetera. And then Bo, I got with him, finally, somebody came by and moved the cans out for trash pickup after they had sat there all week after they got moved the first time late. And then the cans were serviced and they're still sitting out front and had been there for weeks. But my concern would be as, if this indeed gets worse as, before we get through it and as we get more VRBO activity, if we consistently throughout the summer have people with contaminated food possibly left open in trash receptacles and there's no policy for a caretaker to manage that at these rental houses, our employees could wind up going by to pick that refuse up or clean it up or whatever, and.
Well, I would think we should be able to contact the owner and say you need to take care of this.
Situation was just contact the owner. But as far as cleanup goes, it's going garbage. We don't touch.
So then if you contact the owner and then they never move the cans back in after garbage pickup and just leave them out at the front of the, of the street?
Then we can talk about putting a policy in place where we can send a zoning enforcement letter, and then if not, we'll have some fines. That's easy to do.
Okay, all right.
Is that actually a VRBO?
Yeah, it is.
It is.
And the tourism zone knows about it. And actually, when I discussed it with them, just like, I'm, I'm wondering if there's, can you tell me for sure this is registered? She says it's registered and it's an issue that's come up before. And I say, I know because I live right down the street from it, so. Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Bo.
Okay, so we're going to move to committee reports. Admin has not met. Admin and comp has not met. Communication technology has not met, and the next meeting has been canceled. Close to byways.
Progressing with the All-American Road and National Scenic Byway application preparation. There's more details in the packet if anyone's interested.
Who wrote this in here? Was that Ann?
We all worked on it together, but Ann Wordsmith did it at the end.
Very nicely done.
I should say the other, the consultant with state experience on these type of applications is also assisting.
DCECD.
I did not meet the meeting on Monday because I was preparing to work from home for civic issue. But I did have a chance to meet the new director last week.
Yep, Steve Jenkins.
I have to say, his, his drawl makes me a little nervous, but that's just past the period.
I knew it was. I do want to add to that though. Steve has met with me. Last week, he came up to Sister Bay and just wanted to touch up on our, our concerns as a municipality and anything that he can do. And I'll tell you, before this whole virus situation, he's already started to make some inroads and getting some contacts for us as far as some projects and planning in the future, so.
My understanding was there was an announcement today, they're postponing the annual dinner?
Yes. I don't know to when, but I do know.
Yeah, I think it just said postponed. I don't know if it gave a future date or not.
I didn't see a date.
Economic development has not met. Finance has not met. Fire.
Has not met.
In Fire District.
Has not met either.
Historical.
Attended the March meeting, pretty much a standard meeting with the exception of Russ Bulkert showed up with this spiel to the Historical Society about buying the boat, so.
Can I just say something?
Yes.
Okay. Holiday lighting has not met. Library.
We had no meeting. For those who are not aware, Marge Grutzmacher has been brought onto the commission and has been very well received and very well involved so far.
Good. Marina, Marina Fest.
Marina had a meeting. Minutes are in the packet. The advancements of technology have generated a lot of cash already in with reservations, so we need to clean up this coronavirus so that people come and they don't have to reimburse them all. But at the moment, the Marina is open for business and welcome and come on down.
So that, I, that raised a question in my mind. So I'll, I'll play devil's advocate. Why would we not open the Marina this year?
I, I, I have had a few people already reach out and I've thought about it, and, and I can't come up with a reason why not. I mean, for the most part, people are on their own boat.
They're well separated from other people.
Correct.
In the fresh air.
Our bathrooms aren't big enough to support more than 10 people at a given time. We have private shower stalls. I can't come up with a good reason why, coronavirus-wise.
The only concern that I want to bring up just to make sure that it's known is it's all about our resources. So when we talk about making sure that we have enough resources for our residents, you're adding, and I, you know, you're adding a large number to that.
Well, you've got how many slips? Not transient slips, but seasonal slips.
There's roughly 100 seasonal and 40 transient.
Okay, so most of those 100 seasonal already are here
Correct.
or live here, they're residents.
Or come up for the summer.
Come up for the summer, right. But they're staying on the boat oftentimes, or they're staying at their place.
Some do, sure.
Right, but I mean, most of those are already accounted for in our normal take of things. It's the transients
Correct.
that could be an issue.
And I would say too that over the last couple of years, as we have made a concentrated effort to increase reservations, we're seeing a large increase in return visitors. So they know where we are. They know about the operation of the Marina. They know where the slips are. They, they don't need as much attention as, say, a new person. I think we have at least three, if not four, returning dockhands. So at this point, I feel we should be adequately staffed to support even a, a good year at the Marina.
So the real issue at this moment in time only is you still need the physical separation of staff versus boaters? And just have to work that out.
Right, right. The good thing is, our normal operation, there's generally one person inside the office to answer the phone and/or work the radio. And there are, depending upon the time of day and the volume, one or two people out. And, and on larger vessels, you might have two go, but they can easily stay, in fact, they need to stay six feet to catch front and back lines, or they're out at two different places. So in the normal course of Marina operations, there generally is a lot of separation.
Typically occurs, yes.
Yes.
So we'll play it by ear, but.
As of right now, we've had people call and inquire, and it's way too early to make that determination. We'll make that determination at a later date.
Sure. Okay. Parks has not met. Personnel just met today.
Right, so we've got a plan in place for utility, getting that back up to speed and/or even improved, so we'll just work on it.
Plan commission. Results were up above. SBAA.
Secured a three-year seasonal lease effective April 1st for the new location. Casperson's not committed yet at this time long-term to NWTC for the off-season, but that, as of our last meeting, was up for discussion or consideration. According to Wendy Bedorf, treasurer, the new lease agreement will be a $300 savings this year versus last year. $9,300 versus $9,600. So overall, that's very good.
Good, good. Tourism zone.
There was no meeting this week. It was canceled. I'm not sure why. There's information from the December, December 19th meeting in the packet, but.
Kim sent that information because she had made some changes, so that's.
Anyway, meeting's canceled. We'll keep you posted.
Utilities.
Minutes are in the packet. We approved the, we approved the results of our labor.
Questions on utilities? Ute Center.
Slime Fest on February 29th was another big win. We had a full house. Wonderful, interesting comments I received at the event and following up with parents afterwards. Parents were really impressed that the Village of Sister Bay is doing something like this. I had several parents say they felt like they lived in a backwards town, that they didn't do anything for the kids like this. Parents were really talkative about how impressed they were to see an annual event that they could count on for seeing their children develop friendships outside of school in the community. The other thing that the parents are interested in, and we've begun talking to the kids about, is seeing is how the parents like that idea and like the idea of it being something that can continue kind of generational, generational as they move through school, is as they get older and their interests change, what might they be interested in seeing or the parents be interested in seeing so that we could still have an event like that every off-season, but branch out as their interests may change? So all in all, looking forward to next year.
Okay, great.
Rob, can I just say one thing on that? And this is, I know it's a little premature at the moment, but we did have one, it's, this actually relates, I'm pretty glad now I'm making my festivals. It actually relates to the film festival. We did have a young man that arrived in a wheelchair. And so, you know, the, the elevator's broken, completely understand, but it's just something to consider when we do open things up again. They, it took, I think, four pretty big guys to get his wheelchair into the, up the stairs, about probably five or six minutes. The wheelchair weighs over 200 pounds.
This was for the film fest?
This was for the film fest, sorry. Shifting gears, different, it just came into my mind. I don't know why. So it's just something to think about. I don't know, you know, it's the only way we can get somebody with a wheelchair in. I don't know if we're going to have Lego. I don't know what's going to happen with it. I don't know anything about anything, but we did have a wheelchair with, we did have a kid in a wheelchair for Lego last year.
Ad hoc ice rink.
Has not met. Was going to be Thursday.
Ad hoc emergency has not met. Okay, that's it for that. I have one, I want to go back up to one comment. Were we talking about? Item number six, discussion regarding potential issues with coronavirus. There's a couple of things I forgot to mention. Since we did our declaration and had our meeting last night, there's been a number of local municipalities have also done. I think Efrim did, I think Bailey's Harvard did it. There's a couple, there's another meeting tonight.
Hi, Harvard.
That's going to do it. And I did have a brief conversation with John Lowry this morning amongst my travels. And Liberty Grove put it on their agenda for tomorrow night, so Liberty Grove will also be doing a declaration.
Growing across the state too. I've had a lot of municipalities reach out to me.
Yes, and we got a lot of press off of what we did last night between the county and Sister Bay. We got a lot of press. You can go on several sites statewide and you'll come back to Sister Bay and/or county with the emergency declarations. And we've also had a lot of input, great input, on our meeting for inviting a wide constituency of people that would be involved to help solve some of the problems for the group that we had last night, so it's great. Okay. Consider motions to convene into.
Closed session.
Yes, I know. Trying to find on here where all the stuff is. Consider motion to convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.851(c), discuss personnel and employee benefits. Motion by Lino.
Second.
Roll call. Lino, yes?
Zaschke, yes.
Oh, yes. Baker, yes?
Duffy, yes?
We are now in closed session. We'll take a five-minute recess to allow everybody else to vacate.